Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us tonight for our public hearing on the final D. Dot Reimagined Plan. Before we begin, I'd like to emphasize the purpose of this meeting and briefly go over our meeting rules. This is not our regular community input meeting, so we are limiting comments and responses to those that involve the final D. Dot Reimagined Plan only. Everyone will have an opportunity to provide their input following the presentation. There will be a two-minute time limit, and please note that you will be muted once we have announced that your time is up. Please also remember that your comments tonight are for public record, and D. Dot will not be able to respond immediately after each comment. If you have a non-D. Dot Reimagined comment, you can always send that to d dot comments at detroitmi.gov. At the end of the presentation, I'll share all the ways you can make a comment regarding the D. Dot Reimagined changes. As always, no personal attacks or foul language will be tolerated verbally or in the chat. A few items of housekeeping. Second, please. Okay. Permission to record by participating in this Zoom meeting. You are granting permission for your name, image, likeness, and audio and video recordings to be used by D. Dot. Your mute is automatically set to on. You will need to unmute yourself before you make a comment or ask a question. Please mute yourself following your comments. Raise hand to request to comment. You can use the chat to submit questions or comments to D. Dot staff. If you are using the dial-in feature only, you can hit star nine to serve as the raise hand feature to request to speak or ask a question. Q and A is for asking questions, and this presentation will be available for review after the presentation at www dot detroitmi.gov slash D. Dot. Before you ask a question or comment, please remember to unmute your audio, enable your camera if you wish, state your name and organization if applicable, and then when you're done with your comment, please mute your audio. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Yes, so good evening, everyone. So I'm Steve Patronic, Executive Manager for Service Development and Scheduling at D. Dot. And as Kristen mentioned, we're taking comments on the D. Dot Reimagine Plan. We're not responding to them today. We're just, this is your opportunity to get your comment on record. The detailed plan is on the website. So what we're having on this slideshow today is just an overview. And also, the only thing I can answer today is if you have something that needs clarification or something that doesn't make sense from the presentation, you can help clarify that. So we'll start with an overview, and then the draft plan and outreach feedback, then the final plan recommendations, followed by the question and comment period. Okay, we can go to next slide. So how did we get here? We started this process up close to, over two years ago. We asked Detroiters what they wanted from D. Dot, and that was our Phase One outreach, and studied what isn't working with the current system. So we had listening sessions, and we also went out on the buses and to certain locations and asked people what they wanted to see. Next slide, please. So, and we presented the guidelines and principles of D. Dot Reimagined, and followed by a draft plan. So, and then the final plan. So the draft plan was the Phase Two outreach, and this final plan is the last and final phase of outreach, which would be followed by implementation on a gradual basis. So as resources become available. Next slide, please. So why D. Dot Reimagined? Because Detroit has changed. Where people live, work, and travel has changed. The city is committed to bringing new opportunities to Detroit. Detroit for Life is an example of, you know, making Detroit a place where people go to school and buy homes and spend their lives, and having a great transit network is an important part of that. And the best bus transit networks are regularly reviewed, assessed, and tuned up to ensure they are as useful as possible for current and potential customers. And D. Dot was overdue for a top-to-bond review, and we're committed to improving your ride and experience. So D. Dot Reimagined is a bold new vision for public transit in Detroit. Next slide, please. So why does this plan matter? D. Dot Reimagine Network provides equitable access to all Detroit opportunities. So we're building a reliable, all-day, all-week frequent network, brings show-and-go frequencies. That means you don't look at the schedule. You just walk to the bus stop, and a bus, and you can expect a bus to show up soon, and new amenities to the main corridors. It drastically extends weekend and evening service, strengthens the connection to retail jobs and shopping, and demonstrates a commitment to customer experience. So D. Dot is committed to improving the customer experience. New operating program focuses on service reliability, new passenger facilities, improve the waiting and transferring experience, and the planned rollout link to meeting the bus operator and vehicle availability targets. So a year ago, or actually, almost a year and a half ago in the summertime, we prepared a mobile classroom bus and took it on the road, or actually, no, it was just this past summer, I'm sorry, to share the draft plan. And we held 20 pop-up events all around the city at key bus stops, and transit centers, community colleges, local colleges, community events. So that was this past summer. And then we conducted an online and paper survey and asked Detroiters face-to-face what they thought of our plan. So that's a picture of the mobile workshop. We listened and updated the plan to reflect your wishes for D. Dot. So, well, change from the draft plan. So the draft plan came out, and then we heard your feedback. We updated the plan. We restored the 12 Conant Route. We restored the connection to Telegraph on the Warren and Finkel Routes. We kept service on the Plymouth to the Millennium Park Shopping Center. And we removed the recommendation to extend the Eight Mile Bus out to Middle Belt, but the Route 38 recommendation still includes direct service to the other Livonia Walmart. And we made minor alignment updates to several other route recommendations. So this is just a simple way of explaining what we're proposing to change here. So the enhanced corridors are corridors with seven and a half to 10-minute frequency. So currently, we have one, just recently Jefferson. And in the draft plan, there were five, and now there were six. Michigan has been added to the list of enhanced corridors. And those corridors also have features, what we call bus rapid transit features, to help make the service faster and more enjoyable for the customers. Frequent routes, 15 or 20 minutes. So currently, we have two 15-minute routes and four 20-minute routes. In the draft plan, there are 11 15-minute routes. And in the final plan, there were 10 because one of them moved up to the 10-minute category. Basic transit, 30-minute routes. Currently, we have eight of those. And in the draft plan, there are 16 such routes. And in the D. Dot Reimagine Final Plan, there are 17 such routes. And that's mainly because the Conant Route was reintroduced. And then lifeline transit, 45 to 60 minutes, where you absolutely need to rely on a schedule. Those are 22 of them currently. And in the draft plan, there are none, and in the final plan, there are none. So we've gone from 37 routes to 33 by streamlining several routes and combining a couple of routes. And then in the Reimagine Plan, we're up to 34 because of the Conant Route. Next slide, please. Providing more access to better service. The D. Dot Reimagine Plan dramatically increases the number of people, jobs, and current riders with convenient access to bus service. So routes will operate with the same frequencies all day. Many routes will operate earlier in the morning and later at night. So there'll be a daytime frequency. They'll be the same through the peaks and the midday. This, along with much more weekend service, means the new D. Dot Network will let you travel when you want to. So this is a little chart that shows you how access will improve. Well, currently, we cover about 98.6% of the population within a quarter-mile. That goes down slightly because of some of the streamlining we did. But the population within a half a mile of a route is still 99.2%. Jobs within a quarter-mile stays the same. Jobs within a half-mile stays the same, almost 100%. Now, the coverage of weekday riders within a quarter-mile, that went down slightly because of the streamlining of the network. And the weekday rides within a half a mile was almost the same. So this is the access within a quarter-mile or a five-minute walk or half a mile or a 10-minute walk. Next slide, please. So, but then what really changes from the current situation is the access to frequent or enhanced transit. So we had the coverage. We know, but the coverage of the frequent and enhanced routes, which basically means 20 minutes or better, in the current network, only less than half the population has access to that within a quarter-mile, and about two-thirds of the population within a half a mile. In the final plan, 84% have access to a frequent or enhanced route within a five-minute walk, and 93.5% have such access within a 10-minute walk. And likewise, with the jobs, 95.4% of the jobs would have access to a frequent or enhanced transit route within a quarter-mile, and 97.4% within a half a mile. So, and then looking at the riders. So we have our systems, our geographic systems, that can tell us where people are getting on and off the system. So currently, 71% of our riders have quarter-mile access to the frequent or enhanced service. And this will be people getting on the bus for any reason at all, whether at school, work, whatever they're doing. We record where these boardings take place. In the final plan, it's over 90%. And within a half a mile, access to frequent or enhanced transit, currently, it's about three-fourths of the riders right now. That would go up to over 94%. Next slide, please. In the capital plan, okay, so we have the seven enhanced transit corridors, which now include Michigan, as well as Greenfield, Grand River, Wardwood, Seven Mile, Granchit, and Jefferson, which is already receiving the enhanced level of service. Next slide, please. Oh, okay, there's more words coming up here, I'm sorry. So, yeah, East Jefferson Enhanced Corridor Pilot went into effect. The enhanced service frequencies went into effect just a couple of weeks ago. But the features that are going in there will happen later. Well, the islands, boarding islands and so forth, signage, other enhancements will happen later this year and even further into the future. Next slide here. So this is an example of the way Jefferson looks now, currently, where the buses pull over to the curb to stop. And in the near term, we're looking at installing some temporary boarding islands so the buses can continue in the lane of travel without having to merge in and out of traffic, which helps speed up the service. And then in the future, we're looking at more permanent features such as concrete boarding islands. Next slide. So the capital plan includes passenger facilities, which include transit centers such as State Fair, Rosa Parks, major hubs where multiple routes connect, connection corners are enhanced stops where two or more routes connect, and bus stop enhancements, improving the customer wait experience, shelters, seating, real-time information, and mobility hubs are connections where people can connect with places with things like bike share, car share, other mobility options. So those are some of the elements in the capital plan. The operating plan, we're working to improve the customer experience, delivering quality, safe, and reliable transit service every day, every trip. So we're hiring more operators, as we've been telling everyone. We're trying to improve our procedures to make sure that the service gets out and that it stays on time in a reliable way, and that we're employing new technology, and we're trying to keep our fleet in good shape and replacing what's necessary to be replaced so that we can provide all the service in this plan. Next slide, please. So what will it take? Adding much more bus service means more operators. So our full plan in D. Dot Reimagine requires us to nearly double the number of bus drivers. D. Dot is hiring and training more T E Os to build back our workforce as quickly as possible so we can only add the service as quickly as we can hire the people if we want to add it in a reliable way. The plan also means pulling out many more buses every day. So we'll be working to improve our bus reliability and to keep our fleet in top shape. So help us make this plan a reality. Reach out to your city council member, your Don, manager. Let them know that D. Dot is important to you. Attend our meetings, share feedback on how we're doing. Spread the word about D. Dot's plan with your community. Let people know that it's important to the future of Detroit. D. Dot is hiring. Encourage anyone you know to apply. Next. Okay, so I'm going to turn it back over to Kristen. And then if Mr. Staley wants to add something, our interim executive director. But yeah, I'll turn it back to Kristen first.
Thank you, Steve. Just to go over the guidelines for public comment, you can provide your public comment verbally tonight, so it will be recorded into the public record. You must state and spell your name for the record before providing your comment. You'll be given two minutes. And if you'd like to make a comment after today, you will have until March 17th. I'm going to include the slide at the end for reference, just to go over quickly. You can email to d dot comments at detroitmi.gov or mail via the postal service, d dot at 100mac, detroit, Michigan, 48201. Again, I'm going to put the slide up after the meeting so you can take a screenshot or take notes. Okay, give me, please, one second to get situated. Okay, great. And I think we can get started with the raised hands. I have the two-minute timer. And I am just going to start with the hand that I see first, which is Jalen. Jalen, go ahead.
I just wanted to talk about the, well, first of all, my name is Jalen Kemp. I have received a flyer from Mr. Cunningham. And yeah, I just wanted to talk about the buses and stuff. So y'all planning on making like more shelters for the buses?
Yep, just a reminder, this is just a public comment period. So we're just asking you to state your public comment for the record.
Okay, well, yeah, I think it's nice that y'all improving and stuff and putting more bus routes out there, so. That's all I had to say, really.
Great, thank you. Ms. Rochella, yours is the next hand up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Rochella Stewart, and I am with Detroit People's Platform. And I would like to talk about the access with five and 10-minute wait because we still have a lot of ADA and central riders that ride the bus and not pay a transit. We're making that it need to be shorter than 10 minutes because it's not really an option for them. And also, on the frequent network, are they going to be able to carry out that plan with accuracy? And what about the timeframe? And when seven enhanced transit corridors receive the effect of this transition? And what will take the implementation? I will reach out to the council, as always. But if not enough mechanics, dispatchers, and schedulers, and the pay be the way it should be, I can't see even on-time buses if you don't have mechanics take care of those buses. And if we don't get a fleet in here that's, older buses is getting ready to go out of transition, we got to have those buses to take over for the ones that's going to go out of service. I thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Great, thank you. Robert, yours is the next hand up.
Good evening, can I be heard?
Yep, go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Well, good evening to all D. Dot staff, public or board of D. Dot. My name is Robert Plouski. For the record, R O B E R T P A W L O W S K I. I'm the Vice Chair for the Regional Transit Authority Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm transit advocate. So I would like to give big credits and thank you to D. Dot staff for just drafting this plan and, you know, kind of rethinking what the people of Metro Detroit and the residents of Detroit want to see in their system. And what I'm seeing here today, and I've expressed this in an email, but also verbally to staff, that we're doing the right thing for D. Dot, introducing a futuristic plan going forward into the future. But we're also kind of thinking about what needs to come first before we get into that. But kind of I want to focus my one and only comment on the expansion of service. When the plan was rolled out prior, when we had those buses going out and on many different corridors, having people get on and actually look at the service, there were route expansions. With the recommendation of the 17-Eight Mile being completely removed from the table going to the Livonia Meyer, or the Livonia Walmart, excuse me, the Livonia Walmart on Eight Mile Road in Livonia, that kind of struck me because there's not just a lot of people that might utilize that service, but also the 38 Plymouth is very infrequent, and the 17-Eight Mile expansion would not just give more opportunities for residents to be able to use bus service to get their basic necessities done off that route, but it gives more opportunity for jobs. So with this recommendation being scrapped, what does this mean for other recommendations that were planned as an expansion into other communities like Lincoln Park, for example? Again, thank you for your time, and I really appreciate everything you guys are doing. And I look forward to hearing back from you guys on some feedback tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Renard, you are next.
Hi, good evening, can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, D. Dot and members of the public. My name is Renard Mczynski. For the record, that is spelled R E N A R D. Last name is spelled M O N C Z U N S K I. I represent the Detroit People's Platform as a community organizer specifically for transit. This D. Dot Reimagine Plan is a plan that is our plan, created by residents and coordinates with D. Dot, working together to improve transit across our city. I'm in full approval of the plan in terms of increased access to frequency, especially in majority-black PLC and low-income neighborhoods across the city of Detroit with increasing frequency to routes that are typically once per hour. By increasing the frequency to at least 30 minutes, 15 minutes, 10 minutes, and seven minutes, people are able to rely on our transportation system in an equitable way. The city of Detroit is the most under-resourced and underfunded transit system in the United States. And this plan is a concerted plan that evolves and has breathed and responded to residents' concerns and bus riders' concerns as well. So I'm in support of even the expansions into the suburban regions as well, like Downriver and also in Livonia for our workers. I will also appreciate the fact that several routes that worked for elimination are actually being restored. And this means that the department is responsive to the public in that regard. However, there needs to be more outreach as we go into the final plan. I'm in full support of an equitable fare program that will expand reduced fares to individuals 200% at a poverty level, returning citizens, veterans, and those experiencing homelessness as well, too. And I do encourage everyone to continue to comment on this plan, including myself. This is created by all of us. And I ask that D. Dot commit to tying more drivers to service that is described in this plan as well, too, so we can see the results. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next hand up is a phone number ending in 169.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and make your comment.
Cunningham gave me another flyer to attend this meeting. And I just want to know, how do you guys plan on paying for the D. Dot Imagine?
So this is a public comment period. We need you to state your name and spell your name for the record, and then just make a comment, please.
Okay, my name is Rick, R I C K. Cunningham gave me another flyer to attend this meeting. And I was wondering, how do you guys plan on paying for the D. Dot Reimagine program?
Okay, well, we're only taking comments tonight, but thank you for that. And the next hand up I see is Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Cunningham? Okay, we'll come back to you, but until then, the next hand up is Cornell.
Yes. My name is Cornel Mitchell. I'm a lifelong resident in Detroit. You hear me?
Yes, go ahead and make your comment, please.
The rest of the bus says it will increase after District Court is open.
Hello, Mr. Cunningham.
Sorry about that, go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. The rest of the bus will increase after District Court is open? You heard my comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so we're only taking public comments at this meeting.
And also another thing, I like the plan. I like the plan of short turns. And I like the plan. I think about turn the long-term plans and renew bus sign and the new signs and bus charter. And some buses waiting line, some buses waiting line over two hours, no buses out there. Thank you in the comment. Then have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Cunningham, are you available to speak now?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead and state your name and make your comment for the record.
Brother Cunningham, C as in cat, U as in umbrella, N as in Nancy, N as in Nancy, I as in it, N as in Nancy, G as in girl, H as in house, A as in apple, M as in man. Highlight number 313-444-9114, 313-444-9114. So I passed out about twenty flyers, the corrected copies. So I would be very curious if I knew how many people were in the meeting. I know you can't respond back, but that would be just nice to know. I like it, like when there's a lot of new faces or new voices. Um, I want to know if any city council staffs are in and they can put it in the chat if they're here. Would this be shared on cable television? How are you guys going to pay for D dot reimagine? That really wasn't stated. I'm very glad the chat is disabled. I don't know if, why. But the Conan bus is a good thing. I grew up in that area, Six Mile and Mount Road on Dewire area. And I'm glad that the people over there still continue to get their, their bus route of the Conan. Some D dot reimagine, the bus system sucks. So they can make the experience better. I know Councilwoman Calloway was talking about the experience on the buses. All the buses, even if they're old and raggedy, should have wifi and plug the charger of their phone. A lot of people are semi homeless or displaced. The displays above the seating. Usually the advertising there, but it should have the D dot meetings upcoming and that they're giving out free CDLCs and paying nineteen dollars an hour on those cards there. And as always, the audio system should be used to advertise the hiring of bus drivers and nineteen.
Do you have anything specific to the D dot reimagine plan in this last few seconds?
Well, I said, how y'all gonna pay for it? I said, how y'all gonna pay for it? Where the money coming from?
Okay, great. Thank you so much. The next hand up is Fran.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead. Please state your name for the record, state, spell your name for the record, and then I'll get the timer going.
Hey, my name is Frances Billingsley, F R A N C E F B I L L I N G S L E A. And my comment is, you know, I like the reimagine plan. And I've mentioned this in a couple of other sessions, but I think I don't know if this has been considered, but the north-south route in the Brightmore area. There's a route that goes down Evergreen. And then the east-west goes from Finko to, goes to Telegraph. But going through Brightmore, buses travel through from Outer Drive to Sixth Mile. But there's, there's no pickups in that area. And there needs to be pickups added in that area because citizens have to walk too far to go to get a bus going north and south in that area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Stephen, you are next.
Okay, my name is Stephen Boyle. It's spelled S T E P H E N. The last name is B O Y L E, Boyle. My concern in this plan is the auditing of the equipment. You're going to be running buses more frequently. I want to make sure that all of the systems are functional. That includes the wifi. The newer buses having electric sockets in some of the spots in the buses good. We need to make sure that the operators are fully trained in how to make sure that their tracking system is turned on and fully communicating with the system around them and that they're aware of whether or not their audio system is functioning. So this is all audits and how frequently to audit is another question. We also need to make sure that there's seasonal service and seasonal, what I'm saying is our school children are riding the buses at a specific time of day. And we need to make sure that there's sufficient service during those periods of time to handle both the regular commuters riding as well as the, the schoolchildren. That's about the extent of where my comment is on this. I hope that the frequency is doable and the integrity of the coaches is going to be very important. And yes, we need some new buses. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Thomas, yours is the next hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Thomas Yazbek. That's spelled Y A Z B E C K. I like the plan overall. D dot reimagined is good. Just have a few specific comments. One is that it's a little bit confusing to me. You know, we have a final plan, but it's mentioned that the plan will be phased in. So it would be nice to have more information going forward about sort of what is going to be phased in, when, if that's available. Another thing is while most of the route recommendations seem fine to me, I do think there's maybe some more attention may need to be paid to the downtown routing. You know, currently routes one and two only touch the edge of downtown at Rosa Parks Transit Center. It might be a good idea to look at maybe modifying the plan so that they penetrate further into downtown. I also think you know, is while the, the frequency improvements compensate for this a lot. I do think that certain more stable or successful parts of the region like Hamtramck and Southwest Detroit really should have some more service. So I don't know if there's a way to prioritize those places, but that would be I think ideal because those are some of the densest neighborhoods. Overall, I think it's a good plan. Actually, one final comment is I really appreciate how tightly this plan is integrated with capital improvement. So that would include the improvements to the bus stops and the the hubs that you guys plan on doing. It would be great to see a timeline or roadmap for that stuff in the future because I'm very excited about that aspect of this plan. And I think it's one of the advantages of D dot being a city department is that public works and transportation can work together. So thank you for letting me speak and make this comment.
Thank you for your comment. Xander, yours is the next hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead with your comment.
All right, my name is Xander B Fontella. That is Z A N D E R. B and F O N T E L L A. So I am a young resident of Detroit. I live on the east side. Actually, and I'm grateful to live near the cross, in the crossroads between Van Dyke, Outer Drive, two major arterial roads. And, uh, well, you know, and I like the plan, but honestly, I gotta tell you the truth. I, I think it's long overdue. I mean, because so I take the bus. I don't drive. I don't have a car. I can't drive. And I feel like it's the, the two, my two options. I have the Route forty bus Russell and I have the Route five on Van Dyke. Now, the problem is that it's, well, it's great and all, is that the forty bus tends to not run on Saturdays and the weekends, which going straight to Eastern Market, I feel like that's just, that's just a kneecapping Eastern Market as far as being a a major thoroughfare for gardening and all that good stuff. And so, I don't know, anyways, and the other thing is that there's no bus stops at either corner, which I find shocking being two major roads. And you know, like this neighborhood I live in has young children taking the bus, elderly people with canes and young mothers in, sitting in the ring with no shelter, no bus stop, anything, no benches, just a trash can and a sign. And I think that's honestly pretty disgraceful. So I'm excited to see what is happening. I'm very hopeful, but to be honest with you, I believe when I see it. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cynthia, yours is the next hand up.
Hi, my name is Cynthia, C Y N T H I A, last name Benz, B I N N S.
Go ahead with your comment.
Pardon?
Just go ahead with your comment. Thank you. Sorry.
I wanted to applaud Route fifty-two, the Shane bus. I have had good service with them. And I just wanted you guys to know that. But my question is concerning the tracker system. The bus tracker system, will that system be updated? And also updated to the point where it will include SMART?
Now, we're just doing public comment on the D dot reimagine plan today. If you had anything specific, just to comment on the plan itself, now would be the time.
Oh, okay. Well, that was a question. And then again, applaud the Shane route and also hate to see that part of it might be going. So that is a concern. That maybe that could be rethought or reimagined to definitely, to continue to include Nevada between Van Dyke and Ryan. So thank you for letting me state my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Marguerite, yours is the next hand up. Ms. Marguerite, are you able to comment? Okay, we can come back to you. And the next hand after that is William.
Good afternoon, can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, William M. Davis, William, W I L L I A M. Davis, D A V I S. Overall, I like the plan. I also think that y'all should be aggressively looking forward to helping city chart retirees ride the city bus system for free. That would help to increase the economic viability. Also, the economic viability would be enhanced if people knew when they can make, make the connections on the buses. We need to improve our overall service. We need to make sure the buses are properly inspected. Also, I'm president of a couple of organizations. And also a number of people complain about the buses, even if they're not riding them. If they own one, there's a couple of streets that used to be two lanes in both directions. Now there may be one lane and a bike lane. You know, so that helps to slow the traffic up especially if, like I say, you could be on the warren between Greenfield and Southfield, or you could be on McNichols between Livinoids and Wyoming. And you go from two lanes to one lane. And when a bus has to stop and pick up somebody, you have traffic backed up. You know, so I think not only should you look at that, but you should also look at advocating for them not to close down streets and make streets one way in each direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Marguerite, are you able to speak?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead with your comment.
Okay. I I would like more more buses. Um, the main quarter. Like where we're missing Van Dyke saying Eight Mile. Go. Go where the people need to go and with the hub situation. We, we need to find ways to keep people warm. While they are ready as best that. Because because sometimes these buses that pass you up not not knowing that there is a person standing there. And I need I need more time to to make sure that I understand this, we imagine part of it. I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marguerite. The next hand up is Breon.
Thank you. My name is Breon Lewis. It's spelled B R E O N L E W I S. I was wondering when I looked at the blueprint, when it first launched, the reimagine plan for D dot. I noticed for the arterial streets like Grand River, Woodward, Jefferson, that there may be some, there may be bus rapid transit or light rail transit for those routes. I was wondering that if they go, they might add, is it a possibility that they might add those?
We're just taking comments at the time. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be, I, I, what you call those, I mean accordion buses. That's what I was thinking. What is it? I mean, I, I was, I'm thinking that they I'm reimagined that there, I will see accordion buses over where the arterial streets are. That's the only question. That's the only comment I have. I'm finished.
Thank you for your comment. David, yours is the next hand up. David?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my comment's pretty simple. I think the four bus route I'd like.
Excuse me, before you start, make sure to state and spell your name for the record, please.
Okay, my name is David Graff, D A V I D G R A F F. I, I, my comment is I'd like to see the four bus route in downtown continue to Rosa Parks Transit Center. And the other comment I have is with regards to the sixty bus. I'd like to see that go up to the Southfield Civic Center, so maybe possibly extend it a few more blocks. And ideally, I would like to see a bus that goes from Southfield's, Southfield Civic Center to downtown. And those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Jamie Junior, yours is the next hand up.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to say that I enjoy what I see of the plan. Thanks for listening. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jamie Junior. For the record, that's spelled J A M I E. J U N I O R. Now, I like what I see of the plan so far. I would like to thank D dot for listening to the ridership and reintegrating the routes that are there. As an ADA rider myself and an advocate for the disability community, I would like to see or like to know how and an advocate for the disability community, I would like to see, uh, I'd like to know how um, is the training going with the new operators in terms of ADA compliance and empathy? In addition with the increased frequency and timing, I like to make sure that hearing consideration is taken. The ADA riders will be bordered with respect by the drivers, not so much being concerned with time, but making sure people are let on the bus and secure adequately. Um, again, I thank you all for your attention to the public with these routes. My last comment is that please make sure that the bus stops that you guys are regaining are ADA compliant, meaning that they are on level surface, not sinking grass or gravel. And that they are covered so that individuals like myself with power wheelchairs are not getting rained on and subject to our chairs being damaged by the elements. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comment. That is all the hands up at this time. I'm going to reiterate the other methods uh, for commenting on the D dot reimagine plan. You have until March seventeenth. And you can email your comments to D dot comments at detroitmi.gov. You can send them via the postal service to public comments for D dot reimagine final plan. Detroit Department of Transportation, one hundred Mac Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two zero one. And our customer service line is three, one, three, nine, three, three, thirteen hundred. I'm going to ask if Steve Patronick or our interim director, Mr. Staley, have any uh, final comments?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lukowski. The, the only thing I'd add is uh, appreciate everybody taking the time uh, to provide public comments uh, this evening. Uh, also much appreciative of continuing advocacy for improved public transportation in the city of Detroit. And we just uh, uh, reinforce, uh, we, we need to hear from you. So please uh, take time in the roughly uh, next thirty days by March seventeenth uh, to register your public comments. Um, so we can uh, we can include those in our final considerations. Uh, thanks to the marketing department uh, for putting on the public hearing tonight. In particular, Ms. Lukowski, thank you very much. And Mr. Patronick, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, only thing I'd like to add is uh, that uh, uh, for those questions about the route alignments, uh, if you go into the uh, the website with the uh, doc, the larger document, you can find all the, all the proposed route alignments in there. And uh, uh, just for example, on the uh, you know, there is the, the plan, the, the Russell's not part of this plan, but pieces of the Russell bus. Uh, the busiest parts are picked up by the fifty-two Shane near the courthouse and also by the uh, uh, at their uh, part of it's being picked up by the new Conan bus. So uh, uh, the, the, a lot of your questions you can answer uh, in the plan and you might, it might also raise new questions and comments that you can uh, you can make. Uh, you know, through the commenting process. And uh, uh, thank you, everyone, for uh, for all your interest and participation and your support for better uh, public transit.
Great, thank you. Um, and I will, uh, I'd like to reiterate that the info is online at detroitmi.gov forward slash D dot reimagine. Um, and with that, I, I think we can uh, say good night and thank you very much to everyone for commenting.